Happy 2024!
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year from the Cleveland Code and Supplies Department!
Happy New Year from Permanity!
Happy New Year from GTMP!
Happy
New Year!
From the Cleveland Recreation Complex!
Happy New Year from HR!
Happy New Year from the Utility Billing!
Happy New Year from the Finance Department!
Happy New Year!
Hopeless Works wishes you a happy 2024!
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year, let's make it a good one!
Happy New Year!
Happy
New Year!
Drive sober or get pulled over.
I would say that Happy New Year!
As 2023 comes so close,
We want to wish each and every one of you
Happy 2024!
Happy New Year!
Happy 2024!
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year from the Cleveland Code and Supplies Department!
Happy New Year from Permanity!
Happy New Year from GTMP!
Happy
New Year!
From the Cleveland Recreation Complex!
Happy New Year from HR!
Happy New Year from the Utility Lilling!
Happy New Year from the Finance Department!
Happy New Year!
Hopeless Works wishes you a happy 2024!
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year, let's make it a good one!
Happy New Year!
Happy
New Year!
Drive sober or get pulled over.
I would say that Happy New Year!
As 2023 comes so close,
We want to wish each and every one of you
Happy 2024!
Happy New Year!
Welcome everyone, I'm calling the Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024 meeting to order. Want to remind everybody to silence your electronic devices, please. And please rise and join me in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Lord, as we gather for our first meeting this new year, we ask for your guidance. Help us to make wise decisions that advance the common good for our city. We pray for those who are sick or suffering. May they feel the comfort of your healing and the support of our community. We ask this as one people, amen. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, for tonight's historic fact, I've got that duty. And I got to thinking after the last meeting, sorry, my thumb is not working here, fix that. I have a bad thumb, sorry. Thank you.
Oh, I could have helped that.
After the last meeting, the mayor said something about one of the roads in Temple Terrace, and I got to thinking, how did a lot of our roads get their names? So, this is just some of the roads, not all the roads. So, the first roads that were named were around the golf course, when the golf course was built, and that's why we are Temple Terrace. And they had the names of Scotland that was related to golf. So, the streets that were very popular in areas in Scotland were Aberdeen Circle, Bannockburg Avenue, Ben Avon, Ben Lowman, Bonnie Bray, Glenn Arvin, and Inverness Avenue. And there's a lot more, those are just some. River Hills Drive, that's because it went along the river, and I suppose it wasn't very flat, so there was that one. Then some of the roads we've named after important people. Brager was our city's first city manager. Bullard Parkway, that's after Frank Bullard, and he was the Hillsborough County Commissioner, and I think later a council member here. Fowler Avenue, which is named after Maude Fowler, who was our first vice mayor, and her son Cody Fowler, who was our first city attorney. Gerard Avenue was named after Tom Gerard, he was a county commissioner. Gillette Avenue was DC Gillette, and he was our first mayor. And of course, Bertha Palmer Parkway, which is one of our newer streets, that is in the downtown redevelopment area, after Bertha Palmer, who started this whole thing we call Temple Terrace. And then the last one, and I lived through this, in the early 80s, there was proposed development called Terrace Oaks Townhomes, which was going to be 22 townhomes off of Serena Avenue. And the road that winds through the development was going to be called Terrace Oaks Drive. At the council meetings, there were numerous public hearings. I don't know what all the problems were with the development, but there were a lot, and it went back and forth with city council. So finally, when it was approved and built, the developer changed the name of the road to Council's Way. And I assume because the city council got its way on those items. And that's just a theory I have, so anyway, that is everything on the historic fact. Okay, recognition and petitions, proclamations none, presentations none. Board appointments. There's one member of the municipal code enforcement board. The city received an application from Raed Kawaja. Mr. Kawaja has served on the MCEB for the last three years. His current term ends on January 5th. If that is acceptable, can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Brad Kawaja?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Consideration of the minutes from the previous meeting. If minutes are acceptable, can I have a motion, please?
Remove.
Second.
Okay, motion is second, minutes are approved. Persons wishing to be heard. We don't, do we do vote? Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, or on items on the consent agenda. Request to address the council are in the back of the council chambers on that desk. Please complete them and give them to the city clerk. Counsel, we have a 30-minute time limit for all public comment to be continued at the end of the meeting if more time is needed. A three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. When called upon, I ask that you come to the podium and state your name and your city of residence. During the public comment on items not on the agenda, the city manager and all the directors in the audience do make note of these items. Assure residents that all of your comments, all your comments will be taken seriously and be followed up on. So I currently have two. Robin Gordon.
That was faster than I thought it would be. I live on the river. During duck hunting season, which is generally the end of November through January, my family, my dog, and I have been woken up at 6:45 a.m. by the sound of very loud, very disturbing gunshots in my backyard. This apparently is legal. Birdshot has hit my windows and whizzed through my trees in the backyard. My husband has found birdshot on our roof. My daughter has been too afraid to play on the playground early in the morning, as she likes to do, because she is afraid of the sound of loud gunshots, which are apparently legal. Dead or almost dead birds have fallen from the sky and not been retrieved. My family's peace of mind, peace of mourning, and peace of home has been disturbed, and this as well is apparently legal. After numerous correspondences with the Temple Terrace Police, with Mayor Andy Ross, and with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, it is apparent that state law is not concerned with my rights as a property owner. An officer with the FWC actually said, "There is no offense until there is damage to your property or person." Apparently, there is no interest in preventing this from happening in the first place. I have read the Consolidated Hillsborough River Master Plan with goals and objectives and policies related to the river drafted by leadership of unincorporated Hillsborough County, the City of Tampa, and the City of Temple Terrace. There are 26 pages in this document of goals and objectives and policies that cover everything from seawall construction, drainage outfalls, boat ramps, shoreline maintenance, and even the problem of boats that are too noisy and disruptive for residents and wildlife. Are guns not as disruptive to residents and wildlife? The very least we can do is get some goals in place regarding developing regulation for hunting in this area. I would like to propose that we petition as a community and as a city to make all of the Hillsborough River within the city limits or bordering the city limits, a non-gun hunting area. It is too densely populated with residences for there to be unlimited gunfire. My neighbors and I need the power and the voice of the mayor and the city council behind us. What I hear from our city leadership is, there is nothing we can do about it. This can't be true. Please, let us think outside the box and work together to restrict hunting with firearms within our city limits, so that we don't have gunshots going off in the dark behind our homes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Edward Schoring. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Edward Schoring. I live in Temple Terrace, on the Hillsborough River. Since duck hunting season opened on December 10th, I repeatedly heard birdshot pass through the canopy of my trees and of my neighbor's trees. Repeatedly, I've found birdshot on my roof. I have heard birdshot bounce off my window. I believe that this is a significant public safety issue, not just for me, but for other homeowners as well. On Sunday, December 10th, I called the Temple Terrace Police Department to report that birdshot was hitting my house. I asked whether the river patrol officer was available to investigate the situation. I was told he was not on duty. The police department referred me to FWC, Florida Fish and Wildlife. I spoke on the phone with the officer, who said that he'd arranged for patrols to be sent out to our area in the near future to assess the hunting as it was occurring. I also emailed the city council. Yet my neighbors and I have not seen any patrols by our river patrol officer, nor the FWC. No resident has been contacted by the FWC. The officer I spoke with has not returned my calls. Mayor Ross told me that it's not in the city's power to address this issue. I disagree. There are many ways to help, here are two ideas. The city can try to get the answers from FWC that I wasn't able to get. What are the FW duck hunting regulations that allow for the discharging of firearms in residential areas even when birdshot lands on people's roofs? How does the FWC monitor duck hunting safety on the Hillsborough River to ensure that safety regulations are followed? Number two, the city can use its resources to explore how to use existing state laws to curtail the discharge of firearms in public areas. From my limited research, which is limited, projectiles from firearms landing on my roof could constitute felony trespassing. Could the city attorney weigh in on this? Are there other Florida statutes we could point to, such as public nuisance or disturbance of peace, that could be used to curtail this activity? In closing, I'm asking that the city step up to the plate. Members of your city and community are being subjected to repeated and ongoing dangerous discharge of firearms in public spaces. Take action to protect the safety and quality of life of the residents of Temple Terrace.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address the council on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Communications and petitions, none. Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Public hearing ordinances and resolutions, none. Council carryover business. Does anyone have any council carryover business? No, okay. New business and board reports. Before we get into the selection of vice mayor, is there any new business or board reports?
Yeah, I'd like to get an update on the issue from the public. This is the appropriate time, I believe. What is the rules? What's our option, what can we do?
Council member, can I ask the police chief? Come up and address that, because he's probably most intimately familiar with this issue.
Ken Albano, your police chief. First of all, I haven't had a chance to talk to them in general about their complaints. The hunting is allowable on the Hillsborough River. There are ways to do that and ways not to do that, a permissible bylaw. Shooting towards the homes, which would constitute, not a trespass necessarily, but at all, but shooting toward occupied residences, no, that's not allowed. That's not part of what is allowable. I don't have one, we have one marine officer, and no, he's not on the river every day. But we have other officers that can respond. I really need some time to talk to them directly about what they've tried to share with you, so that I can see if they've had conversations with Scott Brooks, which is our marine patrol officer. But there are sanctions, the state preempts most of our abilities to control gun regulations. But within the provisions that are allowed as far as the hunting during duck hunting season, they are allowed to do that within those provisions, and it is documented within state law. So, to ban it completely, no, we don't have that power. We lost the power even to be able to control gun regulations, as did every other municipality and county in the state years ago, when the state preempted that. So, that's kind of where we are. I was writing notes and intended to try to speak with them before they left tonight, to see if I can address their particular issues. But most importantly, whether the marine officer is on or not, we have officers that are on 24/7/365. I can promise counsel that hunting in the dark is not one of the things allowable by the hunting provisions allowable within statute, and certainly if that's going on, something that officers can respond to from the bank, if necessary, to try to get in contact with those who would be out doing that in the dark. That's not allowed.
Without having much time to look this up, once upon a time, cities, and I know St. Petersburg had this ordinance, they made ordinances that said you cannot fire a gun within the city limits. However, in 2011, the Florida legislature changed that and preempted that. So now, you are allowed to fire a gun on your private property. If they're going off their private property, and they're on somebody else's private property, they would have to have permission of that private property owner. I don't know where this person is doing this. They also need to have a hunting license. So if they were found, and they didn't have a hunting license, they would be in violation of at least that requirement. If somebody sends shot onto your property, that is something that you could sue them for. You can't even so much as walk by and throw a rock onto somebody else's property. That is an invasion of your property rights, but that would have to be something that you would do as you're a private property owner against that person. I understand that, but you know, those are your rights. And so you do have some rights, they're not always easy to enforce, though.
But we will, again, I want to have time to talk to you guys, not at the dais, but there's things that we can do to assist them. It's certainly not that we're turning our backs on them, but there are only certain provisions that we will be able to help them with. If you're shooting a firearm towards the land from the river, that's a problem. And that's a violation that the state does have, and allows us to be able to enforce. But being there so we can get the whole number or whatever to try to figure out who that is, that's the important thing, and that's why the communication of any kind of information they can share that would help us narrow down the time, especially this nighttime or early morning when it's still dark times. There's things that we can do, I intend to, again, try to get that information and make sure that we, not just for these two, but if it's hunters that are making mistakes, either intentionally or otherwise, well, we need to get with them before they harm someone. So, that's my intended goals tonight, is to get their information, make sure Scott's talking with them, and then kind of review what I get from that, and then take steps afterwards.
I'm satisfied.
Okay, I do have a question. Do we know when duck season ends? Is it already over for this year?
Yeah, it's not over.
January 29th.
Okay, so we have some time to make some headway.
Well, and, yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
My question's more about hunting in, closer to a city, and there's really no part of the river that flows through Temple Terrace that's not in a very residential area. And just for the, I am pro-hunting, my father hunts a lot, he duck hunts. I've been duck hunting. It does happen early in the morning, when it's usually still dark. But I don't think that there's a place for hunting to happen in such a residential proximity. So what are the rules with that?
There is, and it's in statute, and it's, I don't have, I didn't come prepared to speak to counsel about this, but I can assure you, today is not the first time this has come up. Scott's been out as recently as last duck hunting season. I don't know if it was helping you two, but helping others understand that the rules and how they are applicable, and there are areas within the jurisdictional boundaries of Temple Terrace, on the Hillsborough River, that it is allowable. Not all, but there are areas. So that's why I need to get more information, I need to talk to them, see how I can assist them most immediately, make Scott aware of their particular locations and what they're sharing with us, and then move forward from there. But I'll take care of that, I'll get back to the city manager with that information, and by the end of the week, he'll have something to share with you.
Okay, and you can do that right after this meeting?
Before, as soon as they walk out of here, I don't want to talk while you guys are talking, but as soon as they'll walk out with me, I was always planning to intercept them.
Thank you, chief.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other new business or board reports? Okay, next we have the selection of vice mayor. The vice mayor position is filled on a progressive rotation by seniority. Council members who have served a minimum of two years are eligible to serve as vice mayor. In the absence of the mayor, like tonight, the vice mayor shall take the chair at the appointed meeting hour and immediately call members to order per resolution 96-88M. Pursuant to Rule 6 of the council rules and Order of Procedure, council members should elect a vice mayor for a one-year term of office. So I need a motion to nominate
I would like to nominate Meredith Abel for the next vice mayor cycle.
Second.
Do you accept the nomination?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do you accept?
I accept the nomination.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Now we need a motion.
Oh, we have a nomination, now we need a motion.
Move to appoint Meredith Abel as vice mayor for the next year, next cycle.
Second.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Members of council, there are just two items this evening. One is actually in your backup already, which is the report to the council regarding purchases between 35 and 50,000. There were three, two by the police department that were budgeted. One is a purchase of two drones, because state law required us to not use foreign drones anymore. And then there was a last year, hopefully, of a maintenance agreement with a company that does our computer-assisted dispatch. In engineering, we also had a purchase for sidewalk work along several streets in our community, and those are outlined in the report. Happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Thank you for the report.
The next item is partly an update and partly to seek some direction from council. We received word today that, from Hart, that they would like to meet with us next week, so I'll be meeting with them on Tuesday to get an update. As you know, we were trying to acquire the property across the street from City Hall. From Hart, the last time we spoke with the Hart CEO, they indicated they were seeking an appraisal, which I imagine is what this meeting's about, to try to find out the findings of the appraisal. So I'll report back at that point. Concurrently with this, we have become aware of a property that is on the market in the southeast portion of our community that has, probably would meet the requirements, will definitely would meet the requirements for a police station, could also possibly accommodate future Fire Station 3, if that was the will of the community. And I just want to have a conversation here with the council as to whether you'd like us to pursue something in addition to the Hart property, on two concurrent paths, if you will. Because it is, land is scarce. There's only so many parcels left available, and we all know how Tampa, this Tampa area is growing. So, if you'd like us to pursue that, obviously, whatever decisions we'd have to bring back to you. But I'd like some direction, if I could, on that, please.
Okay, council members. He's asking for some direction.
I think we should at least look into the option of the new property. Harney, is that where it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I am concerned, and same the chief stepped out, but and Chief Kemp, I'm concerned with the location being how far away from it, from, you know, it's almost like the opposite end of the city boundaries. So, it's, that would be my only real concern, was it. I have had no, I've had nothing, I have no indication from Hart administration as to what's going to be in the meeting next week, so I can't, I can't offer any insight to that. We don't have a board meeting until Monday morning, so I don't know if we'll hear anything at that point. I haven't seen the agenda yet, I haven't seen that listed on the agenda. So, you know, it doesn't hurt to look into it, in my opinion. I think that we'll know the yeses and the pluses and minuses from it, and we can make a decision going forward with the new option, if Hart, if the Hart property falls apart for any reason. So I think we should at least move forward and do some due diligence in investigating.
Yes.
I agree with Councilman Jessel that looking into it is probably the right direction. I am also concerned about the location. I'm not sure if our annexation will lead to that area. But it is good to plan for the future and think about those possibilities. However, I feel like the Hart property is probably our best focus for somewhere to go for now. But I guess my question is, how much staff time investment would it be to do the type of due diligence to start pursuing that path? Like how far, I think this is probably what this discussion should be, is giving you an idea about how far you should consider that. I'm kind of tepid about it, but I still think we should look into it, but how much of an investment is that for your staff to look into that?
investment is that for your staff to look into that?
So for this, that's a great question, and I think to be truly nimble, we'd have to have one person kind of dedicated to this for the next, you know, few days at least to kind of, this would be their priority, and we'll work that internally. I think we just, I bring it to your attention because there are only so many opportunities, and this one checks off a lot of boxes for us. To the council members' question about this site, this site would definitely, in my mind, it's just indefinitely because my supposition is that this site will accommodate a police station. This site here will not accommodate a police and a fire station. We just don't have enough property. This property that we're discussing here this evening, I'm not even sure if it's still on the market right now. It says it's on the market. By tomorrow morning, I call, they could tell me that there's an option on it. But it, size-wise, works. Location-wise, the concerns that have been raised here, I've spoken with both the police and the fire chief. They both feel the location would work fine. The fire chief actually mentioned that is the one area of the community where they project that Fire Station 3 would go, more or less, within a quarter mile or so difference of probably where this specific site is. So I think from that perspective, it has, there's a lot of potential there. So I'm not concerned about the staff time. I think we just need to make it work. I'm more concerned about, let's say, we do our due diligence, getting back with the council in time, knowing this real estate market is sort of overheated. Even today, it's still kind of overheated, and will we get those decisions made in time? But that's just the nature of this process. We'll have to make it work.
Thank you. Well, yes, then I am looking forward, I am in favor of looking into it. I do have one other question, though. Maybe I misinterpreted it, but in the documentation where you showed us where exactly it is, in one of the pictures, it showed it on the south side of Harney, adjacent to the neighborhood with like roads called Steamboat and stuff, but in another picture, it showed it on the north side of Harney. I just wanted to confirm, it is on the south side, right?
I know, that was confusing, too. So I can't give a lot of credence to some of the listeners because if you put the information incorrectly the first time. So we've looked at it, it, for all intents and purposes, we could tell it's on the south side. I'm not really sure why that parcel outline showed up on the north side.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in favor of you looking into it, but I also think that maybe we ought to be giving some broader direction because the parcels, this parcel may be gone, and it may have been a functional parcel, but now it's not an option anymore, whereas something else may come up, and then you'll have to come before city council to invest any staff time to find out if it's even, you can't buy it without coming to city council. So I guess my direction might be to be a little more broad in that we want you to be able to analyze the reasonableness of a property a little more timely and then bring that information to council, because I know you can't make any final decisions without council. But if we have to approve, if you come, if it's gone and you come, or it doesn't work for some reason, it turns out that it's not cost-effective for us, and then you have to come back to us two weeks later when there's another parcel available, and then we, I just feel like that's not very timely.
Okay, and I'm good with you moving forward to look at it.
And to your point, council member, that would be great direction if the council wanted to give us the flexibility to just look at opportunities as they come. The primary goal here this evening was, we had been very much dedicated to this HART property, so I didn't want to do something to veer off that path, but if the council was comfortable saying, yes, we know there's an opportunity now, but there may be, like to your point, there may be another one next week. So if you want to give me that flexibility with staff, obviously, we wouldn't make any decisions without getting feedback from the council first. That would eliminate that concern, I think, in terms of the initial timeliness.
I mean, I'm a firm believer that in this real estate market, we shouldn't be focused entirely on one property or maybe two properties because they, their owners may choose not to do any negotiation, and they might be cost prohibitive to us. I don't want us to be locked into something. So I'm fine giving you the leeway to analyze other property opportunities as they come along and then bring that information to council.
Okay, but I think just tonight, because if we're going to do something more long-term, I'd like Mayor Ross to be here. But for tonight, do you have your direction? Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. City attorneys report.
Thank you. I have a lien settlement to report. This dealt with 707 Aberdeen Circle. There were several violations, interoperable vehicle on the driveway, utility trailer parked on the property, debris on the property, and a carport with junk, trash, and debris. I believe the property was sold. The violation was corrected by the new owners, and the lien amount was $3,350. Our city costs were $254.91, and we settled for $554.91, so that was $300 over our city costs.
Staff out there, anything? Okay, since I see none, everybody, I hope you had a good, happy new year, and 2024 is going to be great. Meeting's adjourned.